I'd like to call the January 19, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I just wanted to ask that we take a moment to recognize that it was one year ago this week that Commissioner Mike Frye passed away. And Commissioner Frye was a person who served along with many of us on the county commission and was very involved in work in this community for many years, including his service on the county commission. So I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence to remember the life and contributions of Mike Frye and to have a moment to remember him and his family. Please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by this Board at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda and the consideration of the agenda that will follow for the meeting. There are a couple of items we need to adjust. The first is to add the consideration of the Department of Transportation planning work or the proposed interchange on I-26 to the consent agenda. The staff circulated a memo on this item before the meeting. Commissioner, I mean, Michael Frue, could you just briefly state a description of this item that we're going to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Department of Transportation is spearheading on behalf of state economic development officials in the Department of Transportation planning and planning for and construction of a new interstate exit and interchange on I-26 to be located at, we'll call it Exit 35. It's roughly halfway between the old Biltmore Square Mall and the Blue Ridge Parkway headed south toward the airport would be the location. In order to release funding, DOT standards require that the local Board of Commissioners consent and do a resolution to consent to the project, then they release the funding.
So this is not any Buncombe County appropriation. This would be state economic development funds, but they want to see a resolution of support for that from the county government.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. So this will be a, we're going to add resolution, support of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, funding for the design of a new interstate interchange along I-26. The other item I wanted to request that we adjust on the agenda is to move our public hearings on the emergency paid sick leave policy ahead of presentations on the agenda so it would immediately follow public comment. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the transportation study and the change to the public hearings before presentations? And to follow the remainder of the agenda otherwise?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So are we ready for public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and take public comment then.
First, public comment, please unmute yourself and turn on your microphone and your video. You have three minutes. Brooke Heaton, you have three minutes for your public comment.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry, I was on twice. Yes, my name is Brooke Heaton. I'm a resident here in West Asheville. I wanted to just comment quickly on two issues. One is regarding the proposed sale of the Asheville Primary School on Haywood Road by the Asheville City Schools Board and the superintendent. I believe selling that school property would be a devastating blow to our students as well as the community here in Asheville. And I encourage the city, or I encourage the county commissioners to please be engaged in this issue as the county does oversee the budget, or most of the budget of the city schools. I would also just like to comment quickly on the need to consider vaccination of our educators here in the county before we return to school. I really believe it's essential that educators have access to vaccination before we have widespread returning, before we have widespread students return to the classroom. So those are my two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Don Yelton. Don, can you unmute yourself? When you begin, you'll have three minutes, Don Yelton. Don Yelton, can you unmute yourself? Our third person for public comment has not joined the Zoom meeting at this time. And so with that, we don't have any additional public comment.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on emergency paid sick leave. We will take public comment during the public hearing, but I believe we have a short presentation first. And just for the folks who were going to be on public comment, if, we will be taking public comment during this hearing. If one of those folks calls in who wanted to participate in public comment, I'd be happy to accommodate them if they're willing to hold for a few minutes. Okay, hey Sharon.
Hi. Good evening and thank you for your time. As I mentioned at our last, at the briefing a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to bring forward a policy for the emergency sick and emergency COVID sick leave for our employees. Max, do we have the, can you push the presentation for me? So just as a recap, I know I went into some pretty extensive detail and two weeks ago on this, but the Family First COVID Response Act, FF-CRA, that exhausted on December 31st, which has left our employees who deal with the public and who have higher than normal, you know, involvement with our, with our community potentially at risk. So we have employees who are either in contact with others and they are being required to stay home while they are either recovering from COVID or while they are being tested. And so under the FF-CRA, there was 80 hours that was available to all employees that are full-time and it was prorated for those that are part-time. Many of our employees never use their hours. And so what I am looking for is that you would approve extending those sick hours until President Biden and the House and Senate roll through something that, and I don't know if it's going to look like FF-CRA or what it's going to look like, but if you would consider rolling those sick hours forward. And those sick hours would only be those hours that employees have not used. Now, there's also another piece of FF-CRA that had to do with family leave and what that was looking like, where some of our employees were eligible to use time to stay home if the schools were closed or if their childcare was closed. But most of our employees were exempt from that because of what they did for work. I am not asking for that to get extended. When we look at, next slide, Max. When we look at the benefit usage to date, of the 1,500 employees, we only had about 280 employees that actually even used the FF-CRA benefit. Why does that look like that? A lot of it has to do with the fact that many of our employees were able, that were on either sick from COVID or that were quarantined, were able to take home their work and they were able to work from home, which is a really, it's an awesome benefit for our employees. Of the 280 people, 5.65% of our employees use the extended family leave, which again, that's taking care of their kids or their children while their schools or daycare was closed. The new issue is that for those departments or positions that are unable to do social distancing, we have seen that their absences or required absences, because they have been exposed to COVID, have been greater. We have some employees that through their job have been exposed, you know, three or four times. And what that does is depending on how long it takes for their, for their their COVID test to come back, it could be anywhere between three and five days and they're exhausting all their PTO, which they're doing that because potentially they were exposed by one of their coworkers or one of the clients that they're serving. Next slide, please. So the temporary policy would look like this, that we ask, or that I'm asking is that we extend the emergency sick leave for employee use only. So under FF-CRA, you could use that, those 80 hours for either yourself or your family member. What we're asking is that it's exclusively used for the employees. So if the employees need to either quarantine at home or if they're sick, they would use that for themselves. No new hours will be granted, so if you exhausted your sick hours prior to, your COVID sick hours prior to December 31st, we wouldn't be giving you any new ones. It's just for those that have not used their sick. And then for the quarantine piece, there's some very specific positions that I have listed on here. And those are detention officers, patrol deputies, EMTs, scale house attendant, staff administering the COVID-19 vaccines, and then COVID-19 tests and vaccine site personnel. Since I spoke to you last, there are one-off positions that have come up that I would, I would ask that you give me some discretion should these come up in the future. They're not necessarily listed here, but they may be somebody who is going into an environment where they're not able to take their work home if they get put on COVID. For example, if you had, let's say, a groundskeeper. You can't take groundskeeping work home. And if they happen to get, you know, exposed through the workplace, we'd want to be able to offer them that, that benefit as well. Now, this ask would only run through until President Biden, the House, and the Senate were able to push through whatever the the new, the COVID relief package that they're, they're looking to put through. And then once, once that's put through, this would then sunset, unless you all decide to do something differently. So my recommendation is that we approve the emergency sick leave and COVID quarantine policy. Once again, the duration is until the new federal regulations are put in place. And we, you know, based on those positions that I listed, as well as giving me the discretion, should we have a position that, you know, the person is required to quarantine or is sick and they can't do their work from home, that we could extend that additional benefit to them as well? Questions I can answer for you?
I guess my question would be about the staff or departments, I guess, not listed in your last bullet on that last slide, if there's.
So not all positions, like over in our facilities division, not all of our positions would work in areas where they can't social distance. You know, so if you were a person that was working in the detention center, you were a service agent that was working in the detention center, that, that person may not be able to social distance. You know, we do have some of our folks that are grounds, they ride to and from their locations that are in their vehicles. So if, if those folks were to become, you know, needing to be quarantined for COVID, that would be another area that, as long as we were able to identify that that happened in, you know, a workplace exposure, we'd want to be able to, you know, offer that discretion to make the approvals. The key though, what I would be looking at is, is the, if the position, if we were able to offer any type of work from home, and that could include, you know, I was talking to one of the supervisors whose employee is out and they said, well, you know, we have annual training, can I have them do that? I'm like, yeah, that's, that's compensable time, of course you can. So those are some of the things that we're trying to introduce to supervisors before we move into, you know, do we just, you know, right out of the gate, approve the COVID sec? Any other questions I can answer for you?
Thank you, Sharon. Let's go ahead and hold a public hearing on consideration of this matter. I'll open the public hearing at 5:21 PM. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment during the hearing?
Nigel, you are commenter for public hearing. You have three minutes for your comments.
My name is Nigel Smith. I'm with the NCA Philip Randolph Institute of North Carolina. And I just wanted to say that we support emergency paid sick leave and I will be in full support of her policy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any others?
We, we don't have any others for the public hearing, but we do have one additional person for public comment.
Let me, let me close the public hearing on the economic.
Emergency sec.
Time off policy. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:22 PM. Commissioners, if it's okay with you, I'd like to have the member of the public who wasn't able to get on earlier, go ahead and make their comments now. So let's go ahead and proceed with that and then we'll come back to the consideration of the paid sick leave, emergency paid sick leave policy.
Don Yelton, can you turn on your camera?
I've tried, it didn't work.
There you go, we see you. You have three minutes.
Now, please don't shut me up, Brownie, because I'm going to make a compliment and congratulate you, okay? I mean, I know I'm not supposed to single out one commissioner, but I want to single you out for giving me an opportunity to speak since us old fellows have a hard time with Zoom. And I told you a long time ago, Tom Sobel did that on everything the commissioners voted on and I would encourage the commissioners to consider that because it does show that you care what the citizens think. My comment has to do with simple fact that I know that we've got over $7 million coming in for rent subsidy. I think you're going to discuss that today. It's going to be administered by the county and the county is going to get a grant administrator overseeing it and I think three different personnel. My question is, well, those positions, those four positions, what will happen to them after the grant? Because we know that taxes are going up. I've already had people call me, their taxes went up like 20% and half of these properties in the flood plain. And so there's some challenges going to be there when people get their property taxes. And us folks that are on fixed income, a 20% increase is going to be pretty darn hefty. Especially like in my situation, I'm trying to have affordable rent for three people and I get them and they stay there forever. But do you realize what that's going to do to an affordable rent of seven to 100 to $1,000 a month? So I want you to consider where you're spending money and how you're spending it and be careful. And I'd ask the question of the attorney. And he did answer about some questions and one of my questions was, when this money from the aid, the restaurants and so forth that have been shut down through none of, no fault of their own, they're going to be given money and you're going to be working through two nonprofits. And I said, I'd like to know who gets the money, but I understand that when it's passed to that nonprofit, there's no way we can know who has helped with that money. And I think that is unfair to the taxpayers. That is also unfair because a nonprofit is not a profit-making institution. And if we give a nonprofit and a nonprofit does like the county pulls off 10% of the grant for administration, we need to know that, okay? That's my comment. I'm sure the three minutes are not up, but it's easy to shut me up. I appreciate you though, Brownie, for letting me have my comment. Thank you very much. Y'all be safe going home. And I am sitting outside the door and I will be here next meeting. Have a great one. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you, Don. It's, it's good to see you. Appreciate your sticking with us. All right, Commissioners, let's go back to the paid sick leave policy. Are there any other questions or is there a motion to approve the proposal as described?
I guess, my only question or concern is the, is the policy stipulating, you know, designated employees or specific departments or specific employees. I'm just curious why, why we couldn't just open it up for any, any county employee who has to quarantine for any reason. I should have brought this up before the meeting, but it's not clear to me that that's what this does.
So the reason why we chose those specific positions are those employees that can't perform any functions of their job from, from their home. So as a detention officer, obviously you can't do that from home. Where a lot of our, our clerical or even our managerial staff, many of us, you know, if we're not feeling well, we just take our laptops with us and we work from home. And so that way, we're still, what we're doing is we're encouraging people, if they're well, to still do county business versus if they are getting emergency sick leave, they're doing no county business.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Now we come to presentations and we're going to hear from the Red Cross and then two of our public boards, the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Board, so.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Just, I wanted just, a piece of housekeeping, since we did add an item to the agenda, I texted Commissioner Edwards to make sure she was okay with the addition of that item and she consents to add that to the agenda, so we have seven votes.
Okay, thank you for getting that, getting that out there. All right, we want to hear from the Red Cross about their blood drive in Buncombe County. And Megan Robinson is here to talk to us about that. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Max, could you pull up the slides for me? Thank you. I'm Megan Robinson. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross, serving Western North Carolina, so the 16 westernmost counties of our state. And thank you all for a few minutes on the agenda today to talk about the critical need for blood drives and blood donors in Western North Carolina during COVID-19. So, next slide. The need for blood has not stopped during COVID. We saw a momentary lull when non-essential surgeries were postponed last March and April, but since then, the need has quickly ramped back up to, to pre-pandemic demand. And this is for everything from mothers giving birth, individuals experiencing severe trauma, sickle cell patients, leukemia patients, and, and 25% of our blood is actually going to patients who are receiving cancer treatments. So the need has not stopped and we don't anticipate it stopping anytime soon. Next slide. Locally, over 80% of our blood is actually collected with what we call sponsor organizations. So if you think about the last time you donated blood or you saw a blood drive, it was with a school, with a church, with a college or at your workplace. And since last March, we had hundreds of these drives canceled, dozens of them canceled and postponed in Buncombe County. We did have a lot of groups step up and are thankful to the county for different departments continuing to host their blood drives. Typically, we're looking at drive bookings 12 to 18 months in advance. And now we're working really on a three to four month window, using forecasts of a patient need to factor in what drives we need and where. Typically, we all know this, gray sky events like a blizzard or hurricane are really localized. And if that hit Western North Carolina, we'd be able to go down to Charlotte, to South Carolina and collect those blood units there. Well, we all know COVID does not allow us that. And across the country, we're all facing the same shortage in donors and drives. And interestingly, the shortage of donors could actually be fixed if we actually had enough drive locations in their communities to accommodate them. And that's really what we're looking for from the county and from all of our residents here. Next slide. COVID has also introduced a new need and that's the need for convalescent plasma. So this is the plasma that's rich in antibodies from individuals who have fully recovered from COVID. We have patients and their families waiting at hospitals across the country for this delivery. And right now, the demand has increased over 250% since October. And each month, we've been delivering more plasma than the month prior. There are two ways individuals can donate this plasma in Buncombe County. One is at our Asheville office on Edgewood Road. And another is actually just signing up to donate blood at any blood drive. If their blood comes back with positive antibody tests, we're able to then process it and pull the plasma and use that for the critical patients in need. Next slide. Locally, a really high focus we have is increasing diversity in, in our blood supply. So generally, and often unknown, the best blood match for a patient requiring frequent transfusions, the most common case is someone with sickle cell disease, is actually coming from people who not only have the same blood type, but come from the same ethnic or genetic background. And unfortunately, blood donations in our African-American community has declined dramatically since the start of the pandemic. And this is largely due to the disproportionate rate of infection. And we're working locally to connect more purposefully with our churches and communities to really drive home this need and relay the safety of continued blood donations. Next slide. And so the ask for community support is really around four pieces. If you're part of a community, if you're owner of a business or a really influential community member, consider hosting a blood drive and soliciting your friends and family and networks to roll up their sleeves. Locally, we collect around, in Buncombe County, 11,000 units of blood, which compared to our population is, is in the 1% to 3% range of eligible donors. So encouraging more of our influential community members to step up and host drives. If that's not something that's of comfort secondarily is to donate space for what we're calling community-based donation sites. We actually need physical space, climate-controlled, ADA compliant. The spot, the host organization doesn't need to do anything but turn on the lights and open the door and will work to get donors in. This has been a lifesaver for us. We've partnered with quite a few Buncombe County businesses with vacant storefronts to get donors in the door. Sharing information about the convalescent plasma need. We all know the media is ripe with other topics. This was not one that managed to make it to the top of most pressing topics in 2020 and 2021, but we anticipate this need through the duration of 2021. And then lastly, helping to meet the unique needs of our diverse blood recipients. So as community influencers, as community members, engaging with your constituents and with your communities to encourage donations, especially in our African-American community. And the last slide. And just to end on this, we actually have on February 24th, our 11th Annual Battle of the Badges. This is a Buncombe County event at First Baptist Church on Oak Street. We have all of our badge departments competing to see who can bring, donate the most blood on their behalf. And it's open to the public, so if any of you all are available, I'd welcome you to come by, thank the volunteers, donate blood yourself, or just thank our first responders. It's our second largest event of the year and I am hopeful to see some friendly faces there. And then, next slide. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Buncombe County won last year?
Emergency management won.
All right. Got to defend that title.
They had the most people vote for them at the event. So I do encourage you all to do that. There are some additional resources in the PowerPoint deck that I'm not going to go through, but if anything piqued your interest, I believe everyone has my contact information. I have your contact information. Please reach out if there's any way you want to support or can continue to support. And thank you from the Red Cross for going above and beyond, not just in our, supporting our blood mission, but in our disaster response and our work with veterans and military families. So, thank you.
All right, Megan. Thank you so much for coming and giving us an update on this. I think a lot of people are wondering what they can do to help, you know, these days. And so thank you for shining a light on this important way that people in our community can really help other people stay healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'm going to challenge you all to join me on February 24th, those who are eligible at Battle of the Badges. I'll be there. If you haven't given blood before, I'll go and I'll hold your hand. This evening. Come join me.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. All right. Next up, we would like to get an update from the Board of Adjustments. And Martin Moore is here to talk to us about Board of Adjustments. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you all. Good evening. If we can pull up our slideshow, please, Max. Excellent. All right. So as you stated, my name is Martin Moore. I'm the Chair of the Buncombe County Board of Adjustment. If we can move to the next slide. I just wanted to take a moment and update you about some of the board functions, some updates we've had and kind of give you a quick lay of the land of what we've done. And I apologize, it's difficult to see this from here. In short, as you know, we're a quasi-judicial board consisting of seven regular members and seven alternates. We rule on variance, zoning variances, conditional uses, appeals, and appeals to decisions of the development ordinance administrators. So as you can see, our regular members are up there. We have a dedicated group of volunteers. And again, I'll highlight, these are volunteers, folks who are spending a healthy amount of their time. And we'll get to more time than they necessarily expected to spend, given how things have blown up over the past few years. But we've had a very dedicated board who's been very diligent about executing their function fairly well. Apart from myself, among the regular members, these are all folks from our community. I live here as well, but all of them are laypeople. They do not have law degrees. So something that's turned into a little bit of a legal process is, is being handled very well by folks who have real estate and development backgrounds of many different sorts. Apart from myself, I believe Tim Henderson is the only other member that has a law degree. So we have a little bit of an uphill battle, but I think we've done a good job with everything that's been presented to us thus far. If we can move to the next slide, please. As you can see, I won't read all of the numbers there, but effectively, the numbers are roughly the same. But due to COVID and the nature of the projects that are being presented to county staff and the Board of Adjustment, it's getting a little bit more complex. Initially, when I came on the board about three years ago now, we had allotted about two and a half hours. We could finish most of the projects within that time. Now we are, you can see under the challenges list, we certainly have a healthy number of hearings that span as long as nine hours, if not longer, spanning the course of multiple different hearings, largely due to the complexity of the projects. This is not, I do want to highlight, not an inefficiency thing, but truly making sure that everybody who has a stake in the projects is having the opportunity to be heard and that we're executing our function properly with the utmost diligence. So some of the challenges apart from us operating in a pandemic setting is the standing issue. And that's certainly one that I'm confident has been a subject of discussion in these meetings. That is a point of nuance. We have far more attorneys presenting than ever before. That is not something that two and a half years ago, this board necessarily expected or dealt with regularly. It's used to be a board that primarily dealt with neighbors, folks who are everyday individuals looking to seek a variance from the ordinance and honestly, just helping everyday people with everyday problems. Now it certainly has blown up a little bit more than that, but I think our board has essentially done a good job of implementing the ordinance as it was drafted and intended to be interpreted. The second one, you'll note, public comment without evidence. Because we are a quasi-judicial board, that puts us in a spot where we effectively have to operate as a courtroom. You can imagine courtrooms don't necessarily have witnesses who are not parties of standing or have some direct stake in the case testifying. So we're tasked with balancing the public's interest in these matters against what our legal obligation is under state, county and local ordinance rules here, which has certainly led to some of the marathon, as you can see, marathon five-hour-plus meetings. I will note, the vast majority of those have involved standing as the primary issue. It's an issue of extreme legal nuance and we've had great legal counsel through Mr. Frew and Mr. Freeman that have advised us on that. So the board can get to the meat of what the project ought to be, which is the underlying ordinance itself and the application thereof. If we can move to the next slide, please. So big changes in this, in 2021, we had started in a posture of doing virtual meetings. We had that headed the right direction, started meeting in person due to a few legal issues and concerns raised by attorneys who wanted to present their projects certain ways. In order to keep the board safe, we have revisited the idea of doing Zoom hearings. They are effective and candidly, just given the, the public interest, the board's safety and the fact that we have people who are volunteers dedicating their time and attention to this, we want to make sure it's accessible and safe for all parties involved. The remote hearings or non-remote hearings that we previously were dealing with, again, had some legal challenges. Those, for the most part, have been abated and we have some rules coming out hopefully soon that will kind of take care of our underlying concerns there to make sure that everyone will still have an opportunity to fairly present their case, to be heard and to have a completely transparent process, which everyone can participate and see what we're doing. The Facebook viewers, that's certainly, I guess, a positive element of this in a way. It's more accessible than it would be otherwise in terms of people being able to view, if not participate in the hearings. While there are some legal concerns about who can testify and who may be able to say what specific things within those hearings, I think more than ever, we have a renewed interest in the Board of Adjustments activities and folks who are able to watch us perform our duties with diligence and transparency. And plenty of citizens waiting in on Zoom. That is something that I know you guys have dealt with yourselves. People are waiting for public comment and the opportunity to speak. I think our staff's handled that very well. We've been accommodating and tried to hear as many people as possible. Again, with volunteers taking as much time as needed to get through these hearings efficiently. So you can see some examples of the projects that we've addressed. Project Ranger, Orion, the Busby Road, Crossroads Projects. And each of those ended up being significant, long hearings. For the most part, our board has not really had too much of an attendance issue post us getting the subsequent appointments. We had a group of people who have not backed down from the challenge and we're excited to move forward. If you can move to the next slide, please, Max. All right. Perfect. So this time I'll accept any questions, if the board has any.
Thank you. This is really great update and thank you to you and other members of the board for really what's become a pretty Herculean task that y'all are engaged in. Have you gotten a sense from, from members of the board about how they're handling this sort of significant uptick in the volume and intensity and duration of meetings? And, you know, I just think it behooves us when we see a board, a volunteer board kind of taking on a workload this substantial and complex to really take a fresh look at how that's going for those volunteers? And also maybe questions we should be asking from a policy perspective of is this, you know, just taking a fresh look at these. So I just wonder if there's any perspective from the, from the board's perspective that you'd like us to hear as we think about that?
Absolutely. I, I will say the board has been nothing but accommodating and kind of rising to the challenge that we're dealing with. It certainly is a concern in some ways. A lot of folks just coming on timing-wise and some of this Nathan may be able to speak to as well. Coming on timing-wise hit that interesting transition where we went from two and a half hour meetings, maybe a four-hour meeting every now and then with an attorney to the eight-hour stretch. And that's fine. I think a lot of us are prepared to, to handle that. That being said, it's something that's required a little bit of finessing in terms of taking health breaks, sitting down, making sure that everyone has even small things like providing lunch, giving our folks a chance to step back and, and truly just remain diligent because this is not simple or overly simplified presentations they're hearing from. They're hearing from some really great attorneys contesting over some really nuanced topics here. It is something I believe will continue to rise to the challenge on, but it certainly would invite any creative solutions. And I'd be more than happy to report back after receiving something more formal from our board.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, thank you for serving. This is a board that has had a lot of heavy lifting to do. And so we appreciate everyone doing it. We just did some additional appointments, as you mentioned. A lot of great people applied for this. So we were fortunate to have great folks to choose between to, to serve there. So we appreciate everyone's work on it. I do think that, just kind of following up on Commissioner Beach Farrar's comments. I mean, you know, obviously y'all's responsibility is to follow the local and state statutes that govern how these boards operate. And I, as, you know, I think you guys take that very seriously. As part of our comprehensive planning process and other kind of, you know, thoughts around kind of future community planning, I mean, I do think that there is a, you know, kind of a question on the table from the community standpoint, so to speak, about in the future, you know, what is the, what is the right way, you know, what are the right kind of land use decisions that ought to be sent to the Board of Adjustments, you know, versus other ways of making decisions to promote the best, you know, future growth and development and land use patterns that we, that we want to see. So I think that those are going to be important questions that we look at through this process on revising or creating our comprehensive plan. And, and so it'll be an interesting conversation. And if, and if, you know, if the folks on the Board of Adjustments have ideas and input they want to have on that based on kind of living with the process that, as it exists today, you know, we certainly welcome their input from, on those questions as well, as well as from folks in the community who are also asking a lot of these same questions. So it's not really a question. I just wanted to kind of share a few thoughts on this because I think some of these, some of these process questions, I think will be part of just our future land use planning conversation going forward this year.
And we'd be absolutely very open to that.
Yep. Great. Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
All right. And next up is a report from the Buncombe County Planning Board. And Nancy Waldrup is here to talk to us about the work of the Planning Board.
Oh, okay. Just push down when you're. Push, okay, push down. Good evening, Commissioner Newman and other, all the commissioners and the staff as well. And we want to thank you on behalf of the Planning Board for having us here this evening. We are, we're thrilled that you were interested in what we are doing and wanted to hear about us. I am Nancy Waldrup. I'm serving as the Acting Chair of the Planning Board at this point in time. And I'm not techno-savvy, so bear with me. We had a kind of a unique experience with the current Planning Board. We started as nine of us altogether. We lost one member early on due to health issues and he was replaced by Billy Taylor. And the rest of us have been there for the whole duration. We recently just lost three other members, two due to family and health issues and one because he was elected to be a county commissioner. So we are thrilled for that, for him. What we do is certainly not what the Board of Adjustments does, which we might need to be thankful for because after hearing Mr. Moore's presentation, that sounds quite complex. But we do make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on land use ordinances and including, but not limited to, land development and subdivision ordinances and zoning ordinances. We're not, we do somewhat quasi-judicial, but mostly legislative. So we don't have the, I think, intensity that probably the Board of Adjustments gets. And I'm going to let Mr. Pennington explain this chart to you because it's very interesting and I think he can do it a little bit more coherently than probably I can.
Okay. So, so the Planning Board does function as a legislative board. Just. Closer to the microphone, I'm sorry. Sure. Just like you all do. And right now, they have one quasi-judicial function. And that's when they review a subdivision variance. That's the only time they function in a quasi-judicial fashion. Now, you're probably looking at this chart going, well, what does this mean? Well, it, it indicates some really interesting trends that kind of give us a good projection for where we are. And in the world of COVID, everything's interesting. So while rezoning applications have decreased from 2019 to 2020, look at major subdivisions. It's increased just as much as that decrease in that other application type. I think what that speaks to is it's the attribution of where we are in terms of the need and development of residential units. Sometimes it takes a rezoning to get an application for a major subdivision. So that's one way to look at it. The other thing to keep in mind too, is that we had to shut down public hearings for three months, essentially creating a bottleneck due to the COVID issues. We had to learn how to become producers of Zoom. We had to learn how to do things that I never in my planning career would have thought I would ever be doing. But anyway, there's some really interesting sort of statistics coming out of this application here. Traditionally, you've done about one rezoning application per month. And obviously you can see the numbers have changed. We'll see what '21 turns out, but we do not see an abatement to the development boom stopping. So these folks are here to do the text amendments, the rezonings and also policy. And they've got quite a bit on their plate that Nancy will discuss on the upcoming slides.
And if there's a frustration with the Planning Board, I think it's because when we look at subdivision developments, our only job is to say that the planning staff has done their job by checking off all the boxes that the developer is acting in accordance with the law and the ordinance is in place. So we're really, I don't want to say a rubber stamp, but that's kind of what it feels like at sometimes. So it's just an approval process, which is all well and good. I mean, that's necessary and we're happy to be doing it. But because of that, it sometimes makes us feel like that we don't really have a role to play. We're, we're just sort of filling in a spot that we're checking off, that we're actually being checked off as a box as well. But when it comes to the zoning ordinances, that's a whole different ballgame because what our recommendation comes to you and you make your decision about that based on the input you're getting from us as well as the planning staff. And there is a question as to whether that will remain with the Planning Board or not, I think, coming down from the state. But I know our Planning Board staff feels very strongly about that because they do feel like that's where they have input and that's where they, they can make a difference by what they say and what they feel on this. And we have a pretty varied Planning Board staff. We have several developers that are on our board. We have some real estate people on our board. And we have myself, my, my claim to what I offer is my community input and that I was a former Realtor as well. But the point being, we're, we're not all developers. We don't all have a background in what we're looking at. So it's all kind of new and interesting as we go along as too. But the Planning Board does so much more than daily developmental tasks. We conduct studies of our jurisdiction and determine objectives. We prepare and adopt plans for achieving objectives. We develop policies, ordinance procedures to carry out plans. We advise the Board of Commission on the means for carrying out these plans. We administer and enforce various means for carrying out plans. We perform other related duties that the Board of Commission directs. And your Planning Board is ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work on the comprehensive plan. And if there's one thing we're really excited about, it is the potential that the comprehensive land use plan has for the county and for the future of the county. And we're really excited about the input we will have into that. And that will, I think, make up for when we feel like we're just being checked off the list. We are excited about that. I think most of us have been waiting for this moment. And Chapter 160D amendments for development regulations play into what we do. And this consolidates city and county enabling statutes into a single unified chapter, provides clarifying amendments and consensus reforms. On July 1st, 2021, is the deadline to develop and adopt amendments. adopt amendments to conform local ordinances, zoning subdivision development regulations to the new law. July the 1st, 2021, is the deadline to have an up-to-date land use comprehensive plan. Communities with a zoning ordinance must have a comprehensive plan. So that is a lot to take care of. The other thoughts and ideas from members. Follow-up communication to the Board of Commission on decisions sent to them by the Planning Board. Again, because when we send zoning recommendations to you, that's the one place we have to really feel like we're having an input, and it is important to the members of the Planning Board to hear back from what those decisions were. Consider methods for greater public input, ensuring citizens feel heard. And as with a lot of governmental things, there is a big disconnect between what the public understands we do and what we actually do. But I personally feel like one of the most important things we can do in any governing body is to allow for public input, and I know you all feel the same way because you provide that here. But that's, I think, significant to having the community come on board with anything that we do, is to have them feel like that they are being heard and that they have the ability to express their feelings about that and people actually hear it. Audit the subdivision ordinances with greater consideration for the need for open space, sidewalks, trails, outdoor areas and infrastructure, NC Dit infrastructure improvements connecting existing road networks to new development. Audit the community-oriented development program for its effectiveness in encouraging the development of affordable housing and revise if needed. The community-oriented development program was something that we spent a good bit of time on, and we were very happy to be part of that process, just like we will be the comprehensive land use plan. So again, this is important to us going forward as it is also important to the community. And the subdivision ordinances, we've been there for quite a while, and we've seen a lot of things happening in the county, the growth in the county. And I think if there's anything that the Planning Board feels like is that we have seen areas where improvement needs to be made in what we're doing with subdivisions and how we're going about growth. It's not that growth shouldn't happen. Growth definitely should happen. It's just doing it in a wise way, in a way that protects the green spaces and allows people to be able to enjoy. Nature is also important, and if we can do something to enhance that with our subdivision ordinances, that would be Future planning considerations. Consider methods to educate the public on the duties and responsibilities of the Planning Board and the benefits of conservation and low-impact land use tools. Create a comprehensive land use plan that is progressive and visionary to restrain sprawl. Evaluate the use of service area boundaries or urban growth boundaries. Study impact of climate change in relation to our zoning ordinance, adverse effects of weather, mudslides, floods, et cetera, and align with a hazard mitigation plan. Strengthen our steep slope, hillside, and protected ridge overlay district codes to better preserve our natural landscape. Consider conditional zoning, especially for rezoning applications and large-scale subdivisions. And these considerations came from the members of the Planning Board. They each had an opportunity to give us input into this slide, and it also goes back to what I was talking about previously about places that we see where there could be changes made in what we're doing now to make improvements for the whole county. And that is the end of my slideshow, but I would also like to add one more thing. And I know you all already know this, but you have a tremendous planning department, and they do a tremendous job for this county, and they do a tremendous job for us as a Planning Board. Their preparation that goes into the materials we receive to look at is excellent, and it has only gotten better over time. And I just really appreciate the job that Nathan and his whole staff does, and I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Nancy. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Nate or Nancy, I have to ask because I heard Nancy hint at it, but is the state flirting with the idea of changing what board gives us recommendations on zoning regulations or land use regulations?
No. Wouldn't, you made that mention we were talking about specifically. I think it had more to do with 160D.
Okay.
Adopting 160D, which is coming your way, by the way, and it'll be so much fun. So we need to take that to the Planning Board first, and we plan to take that to the Planning Board in March with an appearance before you all in April, maybe at the latest, the first meeting in May. And this essentially is taking the city-enabling legislation, county-enabling legislation, and putting it together. And just one further clarification, too. We do technically qualify under our existing land use plan of 2013 to meet that statutory requirement for communities with zoning ordinances need to have a comprehensive plan. There are many communities that actually, believe it or not, don't have a comprehensive plan, but I think we can all agree, we need a new plan still. So obviously, that's underway, and that RFP is out there in the public now, awaiting people to submit good suggestions and plans for us to move forward on that.
Thank you. And thanks, Nancy.
All right. Thank you, Nancy, to you and all the folks serving on the Planning Board. Appreciate you. All right. We have already taken care of the public hearing. So we come next to the County Manager's Report.
That report.
Very good. We do not have any old business, so now we come to new business. And the first item is discussion about the FY 2022 cost of living adjustment, and Jennifer Barnett is here to present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So while this agenda item requires no action from you this evening, we...
No budget amendment.
Staff to support. Okay. So maybe it will require a little bit of action. My apologies. So we committed as staff to bring back to you during our fiscal year '21 budget development discussions, we committed to bring back to you the fiscal year '21 cost of living adjustment calculation prior to applying it per the personnel ordinance. During the fiscal year '21 budget planning cycle, we had a conversation with the board around the cost of living estimate and calculation, and an intentional decision was made to reduce the salary and benefits expenditure budget by a projected fiscal year '21 amount, so $625,000 we reduced off of the expenditures in an effort to, as an additional measure, to balance our anticipated pandemic-related shortfalls. So I'm bringing you this information. December, the calculation per the personnel ordinance is the percent increase from the December's CPIW from December of 2019 to 2020, and that percent increase is 1.45%. Per the personnel ordinance, that 1.45% would be applied effective April 2021. So the cost estimate for a fiscal year '21 cost of living at 1.45% for April to June would be an estimated $400,000 for the current fiscal year. The impact for fiscal year 2022 would be for the July-through-June timeframe, so $1.67 million based on current headcount. If new positions were added, obviously, that would be more than the 1.67. So staff is recommending that we use lapped salary to cover fiscal year '21 costs when we're applying this per the personnel ordinance. Staff would also like to bring this topic back in a few short months during the fiscal year '22 budget discussions and propose that a cost of living adjustment be aligned for decision and implementation based on the fiscal year time period for July through June. So that's the information I have to share around what that calculation would be. And again, so the technical action and request would be to acknowledge that we would be able to use lapped salary to cover it for the current fiscal year.
Thank you. Jennifer? Commissioners, are there any questions, comments?
I have a question. I just want to make sure this does not include Commissioners, right?
Good question, actually.
Would be a decision that the Commissioners would make?
Okay.
So just a little bit of background on that. Thank you for raising it because I feel like it's kind of one of these things that sometimes we sort of end up scurrying around and talking about it kind of at the last minute. We are county employees, right? Part-time doing this role. We are county employees in that role. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the general process would be unless the county Commissioners make an affirmative decision for it not to apply to us, it would apply to us. In many, in many recent years, we have made the affirmative decisions to not accept it. So is that the correct process? We would need to basically, once, if we choose to do the cost of living adjustments, we would also need to make a decision as a body to have it not apply to the board.
Correct. It is an across-the-board adjustment to the pay grade, so yes. If you don't make a decision, it would be applied.
Effective in April, just like with everyone else.
Yes, sir.
And, okay. So we would need to kind of take that up if that's something that we want to do, right? Good question.
I suggest we take it up.
Okay. I would be in favor of that, too.
Me, too. Do you want us to put that on the agenda and look at it? Okay.
Yes.
Or, I mean, I don't know. We could even, so the decision that we do want to have considered tonight is the adoption of this for the current fiscal year, so that it would apply through the end of this, effective April through the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Budgetary estimate of around $400,000. So we could, if we approved that tonight, if we wanted to, we could actually go ahead and add the Commissioner provision to it if we wished to. I think that would, does anybody object to that being included in a motion?
Yes, sir. That would work.
All right. Great. Well, we could just take it up. We could just handle it tonight if we wished to. So let me just ask a follow-up question to you, and I'll make sure I'm hearing the process correctly. So the request is to consider approving the 1.45% cost of living effective April through the, which would apply through the end of this fiscal year, but then the staff are requesting that we come back and further consider this as part of our budget process going forward. So rather than it being on the April-to-April cycle in the future, this will be on the budget cycle. Right? Well, I really support that, and I appreciate y'all bringing that in here because I think that, I mean, I'm really pleased that the Commission has been supportive of the cost of living adjustments. I think it's something that we should really support absent extraordinary circumstances. I mean, of course, in the last year, we've been in some pretty extraordinary circumstances, so I think we kind of raised the question of like, we need to check in and make sure we can do this because we didn't know where the world would be at this point, you know, nine months ago. But I do think it's something that should be part of the budget process. If we're not gonna, wherever we land on it, it should be part of the budget process. So I think that's a great recommendation for the future. Any other comments? Is there a, I'll try to make a motion on this. So I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation of the cost of living adjustment for the remainder of the fiscal year, which would be effective in April, continuing through the end of this fiscal year of the 1.45% as identified by staff, that this cost of living adjustment will not apply to the county Commissioners, and that the county commission will hear further recommendations for future cost of living adjustments as part of the budget cycle. Does that capture what the staff recommendations intended?
It does, but I do want to clarify real briefly. Typically, this, typically, this would start in April, and it would go to the following April, so it will go through most of the fiscal year. So I want to make sure, are you looking for us to come back so that we have another allocation in July, or would this go through and we would talk about an allocation the following year? Are you looking for it for this July?
So thank you for asking, because I guess I was a little bit unclear on that point myself. So what would the staff, I mean, if we're going to make this transition to try to sync it up with future budget cycles, how do the staff recommend we actually do that? Do we make this one really short-term with a kind of a, another decision made just a few months later so that it begins for July to July, or do we apply it all the way through next April within, within next April, we're going to be right back in the same position, aren't we? So how do we make the transition?
So Fru is standing there because it's a personal ordinance, which would mean public hearings and stuff, so I think he wants to talk about that.
Yes, thank you. So we've got a couple issues. We're here, and Ms. Barnett's presented because this is a budget and finance issue, looking for the Board's approval for this funding of this 1.45%. Compensation of the Board is by statute
Okay.
part of the budget process, so it'd be part of the budget ordinance. So if you want to give direction to staff to make the change that I understand your motion to mean, you direct us to bring back a change to the personnel ordinance to affect it.
To the personnel ordinance?
That's, that's what drives currently, that currently drives the CPI and the COLA.
Okay. Let me ask a question, though. So I think the intention of the motion was not necessarily to permanently take the county Commissioners out of the cost of living adjustments, but simply for the decisions we're making right now, that we would be supportive of it not applying to the Commission. So more of a temporary than saying, you know, never in the future should there ever be a cost of living adjustment, so...
But to align it with the budget cycle, that would make, that would require a change in the personnel ordinance or a change in policy.
So you're recommending we exclude that from the motion now?
At this time. Just give direction to staff.
We're just giving direction. Okay. Let me, let me, let me try again on a motion, then. I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the cost of living adjustment, 1.45% effective in April. Okay, but actually, I'm sorry, but I don't, I'm not sure. I still am looking for the guidance on how do y'all want to make the transition, just on the county's employees. How long do you want this to be effective for? Just the remainder of this fiscal year, and then we re-up it in July or in June for the coming 12 months after that?
I would need to review that more and discuss that with finance and budget, but I think right now that you're asking for the budget amendment for the rest of this current fiscal year?
I was thinking it would be a 15-month conversation. So it would be three months to June, and then that 1.6 is July through that June. You would line it up after that, so it would not go to, it wouldn't end in April. Again, it would go through that June. So I was looking for a 15-month
That sounds good.
...conversation. Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna try one more time. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the cost of living adjustments for county employees, effective in April for a period of 15 months. And that's also something that we can do based on the current personnel ordinance. That's a permissible motion. Okay. So that's the motion. Let's go ahead and do that, and then if we need to talk further about these other elements, we'll, we can talk further about that. But that's the motion.
But does that exclude the Commissioners?
Can we, can we include Commissioners in this motion about, about not applying it to the Commissioners, just for this, just for this period of time, not for permanent?
Because of the nature of this discussion involves the funding for the 1.45%, and the Commission is not generally required to fund certain things, but if you're, if it's a funding for an additional compensation, which is how I'd interpret it, yes, you would make it clear through your motion that the Commission would not be increasing its compensation at this time. And that's based on the fact that compensation for the Commissioners is established through the budget ordinance.
So we can do it now?
I think you can, yes.
Okay. Then I'd like for that to be included in the motion, too, that this, that this increase in cost of living would not apply to the county Commissioners during this 15-month period of time. All right. I hope that's a little more clear now. Is there a second to the motion? All right, further discussion? Okay. Let's go and vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great. And so do we need to do anything else to now kind of put this on a, so this is in effect for 15 months, so it's not something that we need to take up, like, in a few months from now for the vote that we'll take in June? It's something that we'll take up next spring for consideration in the FY 2022 budget?
We will take it up before December and make sure we do a change to the ordinance to make sure ordinance is aligned.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've been talking about, have we, the salary compensation study. When will we get that?
That's broken down into several components, but the first part that we would talk about, we would be reaching out to you guys this month, February, to start that conversation. We will look to make any adjustments in that. If there are critical things that we need to change, we will try to do that before June 30. We do have some places that we think we need to be in, critical and get them done now. And the other pieces will come as part of a budget recommendation that we would move forward to fix some salaries. So, you will be hearing from us this month.
And the reason I bring that up, I think at some point in time, we need to do this right. And we need to, the problem I have with the COLA, everybody gets the same thing. But if we're doing the reviews the way we should, the performance evaluations, you know, I've been one, I believe in paying people for the output, you know, for what they do. And if we have the salary ranges right, and we're doing our annual reviews the way we should, let's reward the people for what they do. But when you have a COLA, you go across the board and everybody. And then you begin to ask what's fair and what's not, you know? I mean, that's something another life, we had to adjust at the company I worked for. Because we did away with that, and we saw the improvement was unreal. And it didn't hurt the salaries either, you know, when you look at it. But we, with the salary ranges and everything, we did. We found out, you know, that we took the money and just, you know, we looked at it in a different way.
So, I need to answer that differently, then. The performance appraisal system, we currently don't have a performance where we look at people's performance.
That's what, that was my question, right.
That's a longer conversation, because we need to build that out. We need to build goals, and we need to build a metrics where we can judge and look at people's performance.
Right, that's what I was getting, okay.
The, the other conversation around compensation is getting our grades right, making sure people are paid within those grades that we already established. That's the piece that we'll be completing and reaching out to you in the next few weeks to talk through, what does that look like? But long-term, we have to work on a benefits conversation, and we also have to work on our performance system for the county. But those two things, those two things are, are, the benefits conversation will be this year, will be starting out this year, so that when we get into renewals for October, we will have those benefits conversations. But the performance system will probably be '22. We started a pilot with department heads, so all department heads right now have goals. And we are piloting that system within our county, and we'll turn that on to all county departments within the next year.
Good.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else we need on this item? All right, great, thank you. So, the next item is consideration of a budget amendment for emergency rental assistance. And Jennifer Barnett's gonna help us out with this one, too.
Yes, so, this is a request for a budget amendment which impacts our Grants Projects Fund. The Buncombe County Health and Human Services has received a grant in the amount of $7,877,876 from the U.S. Department of Treasury for Emergency Rental Assistance. This program is to assist households that are unable to pay rent and utilities due to COVID-19 pandemic. The grant allows that funds may be used for direct financial assistance, including rent, rental arrears, utilities, home energy costs, utilities, and home energy cost arrears, and other expenses related to housing. It is noted by the funder that the grants generally expire on December 31st, 2021, but may be eligible for up to a 90-day extension. It is noted in this federal award that up to 10% of the grant may be used for administrative costs. Health and Human Services will be administering this grant, much like they have already been working through with the One Buncombe, and then their general programming for general assistance. They currently are requesting three full-time positions in addition to one grant manager position, so four in total. The ask is that it is grant-funded, and these positions would only be in-service or available for the duration of the grant funding award. So, these obviously would sunset at the end of any available funding to be able to conduct the work in support of administering the grant. And then, so part of the administration, we would additionally request, is that there, there may be some office supplies in addition to that. The commitment through Health and Human Services, is that any of those dollars that were not for those four positions or for supplies, that if it was less than the 10% that was needed, they, we've left it open in the budget amendment, for them to be able to redirect those to direct assistance funding if those dollars were not needed? And I know Philip Hardin is here, if there are any additional specific programmatic questions?
Are there any questions?
Not a question, but it's pretty amazing that we've received a grant of $7.8 million to help local residents. That's incredible.
I think it was a direct allocation. So, there were seven, about seven counties or so in the state that have a direct allocation of that magnitude, and the rest went to the state. Normally, we would apply to the state to get funding. This was a direct allocation from Treasury.
Have we ever received anything like this?
Staff is telling me they haven't been aware of that before.
Yeah. That's incredible thing about all the people. It will help. Thank you to everyone who's been working on this.
Now, that, this, Ms. Pinder is absolutely correct. North Carolina was awarded $702 million. There were 17 entities in the state that had populations of over 200,000, whether it was a county or a city. And those 17 entities could apply directly. So, we, this came up on January the 6th, and I think they've already actually distributed the money. That's how fast it happened. The paperwork has gone back to the state.
CDBG?
And we still have the Community Development Block grant dollars sitting out there.
But that took us over a month and.
Yeah, that's amazing. Well, could you just maybe start by kind of sharing a snapshot of what, for a person who would need this kind of assistance? What does this mean? How much can they access?
And when can they access it?
Yeah, just real kind of, sort of building blocks of it.
I'll give you a high-level overview of that. Because there's, it came from U.S. Treasury, and it came so fast, and it came during the last stimulus package, that the only real rules I have so far are four-page question and answer, and that's really about it. So, it's still a little sketchy, but I'll give you that high level. 80% of the medium, area median income is the income limit, which is the same for CDBG. For a family of four, that's a little over $57,000 a year. The priority goes to people at 50% of the area median income, or if they've been unemployed for 90 days or more. You can pay a rearage rental, it's only for rent, so it does not include mortgage. It includes utilities, but they do not, as of right now, they're not defining broadband as a utility. It'd be water, sewer, you know, electric, oil, heat, gas, those things. You can pay a rearage back to March 13th of last year, when the health crisis was established, March 13th, I think, of 2020. You can pay over a period of months. It actually allows you to pay up to 12 months, so you can do a rearage, or you can go forward. And then you could actually add three months onto that, so a total of actually up to 15 months. The, the problem with that is you have to do income eligibility with those families every three months if you're paying forward. So, there is some administrative burden in, in being able to do that. You have to turn around and determine eligibility again. That's really the high-level overview.
Is there a cap that a family could receive?
There is not. It has no monetary cap on it.
So, just one way to translate that would be anyone who's earning 80% AMI or less is eligible, pay past rent that's due, or utility, or bills that are, utility bills that are due, or forward, up to a period of 15 months total, and there's no monetary cap for a family?
That would be correct.
That's pretty extraordinary. What's that?
And this is just for residential? This is for rents, in a residential setting? When do we believe the program will be operational? We've got to hire these additional staff. You've got broad outlines, but when will the program kind of begin to function?
We, we're gonna repurpose some staff that we have already, that, you know, we, we've run two housing programs already with CRF dollars and One Buncombe dollars, and we'll run CDBG dollar at the same time. The one good thing about the CDBG grant is we have 30 months to spend that $900,000 grant. So, we'll probably put that to the side unless we need it for some reason, because these dollars have to be expended by December 31st with the possibility of a three-month extension. So, we'll use the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Funds. But to your question, my hope would be sometime by middle to late February, we can get up and running. We have a meeting with County IT tomorrow. There are data reporting requirements for this grant that you have to report back to Treasury that we've not captured in the past. So, we're gonna have to build a platform to be able to capture that information.
So, I have a question, Philip, and first of all, thank you for your initiative on this. This is wonderful. The, I think it was with the CBDG funds that that was Buncombe County only because the city received funds. Now, with this grant, does this include the city as well?
It does.
Okay.
So, we can do rental assistance in any, in Buncombe County as a whole. It does not exclude any municipality. Asheville may get some of this money somewhere, once I say, the state got 702 million. When you take off the direct assistance grants, that left about 550 million that actually went to the state. And they'll divide those dollars up. They've not said how, but to those municipalities or counties that weren't direct recipients, whether Asheville gets dollars or not, it doesn't matter. We can serve all of Buncombe County with these dollars.
And then my other question is, if you're going to hold the CBDG funds, just because you have a longer time span, those are available for broadband, for internet payments, and since the others aren't, well, I'm guessing you can still focus on helping people who need help with that as well?
Absolutely. And, and they can also, those funds can be used for mortgage. So, if we run into those situations, we could possibly still pay mortgage in the county, because remember, they're excluded for the city of Asheville. So, you know, we'll try to, to use the two pots concurrently to make sure that we're covering all our bases.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, we have LIAT, that's what, $400,000 in LIAT? The Low Income Housing, the Low Income Assistance Program that we give to Evelyn. We also have a heat in a separate, so.
Correct. There are, yeah, Crisis Intervention Program and the Low Income Energy Assistance Program that Evelyn's administered. Right now, it's about 1.8 million.
What would it be like for a family to apply? What would, I know you're working that out, but just generally, they call that number?
We will, more than likely, it will be on the same basis that we use the CRF funds, that we had a call center number or an inquiry form that will apply, and then we'll, we'll take that inquiry form, and we'll have a caseworker call them.
Okay.
There, there is a little bit more administrative burden with these dollars. The CRF, we took attestations a lot, whether it was from landlords or from clients. With this, we're gonna have to pass a little bit more paperwork back and forth because of Treasury requirements that we'll have to get signed attestations from landlords and clients, and probably a little bit more along the lines of verifying income versus, say, client statement. And you have a couple of choices to do that, so.
I'm curious where, I guess, the, the calls that you get from folks, is it typically referrals? That comes your way from nonprofits locally, or where do, where do people find, find you typically?
We've not had a problem because we've run housing programs for the last nine, 10 months.
Words out.
Yeah, and we've worked with county communication, you know, with CRF. We did some slow rollouts, then big rollouts. You know, it's a matter for us of being able to make sure that we have the capacity to, to turn cases around in a, in a fairly quick period of time. I don't, you know, my goal would be not, somebody applies them within a couple of days. Hopefully, we could turn that around, and, and you don't have people waiting, say, two, three weeks. I know with NC Hope program, I think they've only probably run through, they took 44,000 applications for that program in a period of about five or six weeks, and I still don't think they've contacted everybody who applied, and they quit taking applications back in early November.
That's outstanding. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we need to, two separate motions. The first is we need to approve the four grant-funded positions, and then after that, we also need to have a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Motion to approve the four positions?
There's a motion and second to approve the four grant-funded positions. As pointed out in staff report, these positions are temporary positions associated with administration of this grant.
That's correct.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
I'm over that we approve the budget amendment.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, and again, thank you to all the county staff who helped pull things together to make this possible. This would make a very profound difference to a lot of people who are very, have a lot of stress associated with these concerns around how to pay their bills and pass bills and, and their housing costs going forward as we work through the last stages, hopefully, of this pandemic. So, thank you very much. All right. We now come to board appointments. We've got the Civic Center, we've got four applicants for the Civic Center Board. These are all new applicants, so these are, but we have one appointment for four positions. Correct, Lamar?
That is correct.
One opening for, for applicants.
We do have a rec, we do have a recommendation. I don't know, do you know, know that that?
Yep, there is a recommendation from the Civic Center Commission. So, um, the question to us is, do we want to do interviews for these, for this position, or, or the recommendation on this one? If we're gonna do interviews, when would we do these, Lamar?
We are scheduled to do interviews on February the 16th for previously noted boards, including the Planning Board, the Asheville Planning and Zoning, and the Board of Equalization and Review, who will have February the 16th.
And that's for Planning Board, and what were the other ones?
Asheville Planning and Zoning, Board of Equalization and Review.
Okay.
And just to give you, this is the actual City of Asheville Board, but we have an appointment to this board. So, just to give you clarity on that information.
Okay. Anybody have strong feelings? I, my inclination would be to support the recommendation from the Civic Center Commission on this one.
Well.
That's my hunch, too. Do we typically get recommendations from these boards?
It's been, it's been, it's been an ongoing. It's been, it's been an ongoing conversation, yes, some, some do.
Okay.
Yeah, also, just to kind of bring, bring it back, I think at one point in time, when we decided to put the category of boards, the advisory, funding advisory, quasi-adjudicial, and the governance board, we kind of talked about advisory being a recommendation and a non-interview category with discretion of the board to interview when wanted to.
Thank you for the reminder on that, and this, and the Civic Center is viewed as a purely advisory board, I mean, obviously, the county does put funding towards it, sometimes it's mostly a city responsibility, but this is considered a, kind of a pure advisory board, they don't have a regular funding request that comes before us.
Correct.
Yep. I'll make a, okay, then I'll make a motion that we appoint Donna Bailey.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next is the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, we've got one applicant for one available position. Recommend Rebecca Hertz, Hertz, maybe pronouncing that wrong. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we now come to the Agricultural Advisory Board for Farmland Preservation, also an advisory board. We have three applicants for three reappointments for this board.
You need a motion?
Sure.
I move that we reappoint Terry Wells, David Lee, and Edgar Bullitt.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I did just want to make one, one note on this, so we do have a, we do have a general commission policy around terms on boards, right, which is that we, we have it as two. I think in, in Commissioner Wells has served two, but the board does have the, the discretion to change that. I think it's something that, you know, and we've had some other positions come up where people had served two terms, done a great job, and wanted to serve more, and we've been pretty consistent about the two-terms policy, but I think in this case, with Commissioner Wells being a county commissioner and wanting to serve on this board, I do see that as sort of different than just sort of the typical kind of a resident service on a board, because she, obviously, this is a high priority for her as a commissioner, and we get the benefit of her being like a liaison to this board, so, anyway, but I just wanted to just kind of acknowledge that, because it is a policy we have, and just share a few thoughts on that, so, any other thoughts or comments on that? Thank you for serving on it, you do, you do a great job, of course.
Also want to note, note that that's two consecutive terms, so if somebody steps off of a board and they apply again, they can serve, they just have to take time away from that board, as far as terms are concerned, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. All right, and then finally, the Mount Area Workforce Development Board, we have one applicant for one position.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that completes Boards and Commissions, I believe we do have a need for a closed
Can I have one second, please?
Yes, sir.
Um, just want to touch bases with you, I did add a document within your actual documentation, and it is on General Statute one fifty-three A dash seven-seven, and it is in reference to the HHS Board, and they wanted, just to make sure that they have clearance or information on this, the board, I did highlight a section that says that the board has to actually make appointments, or not necessarily appointments, I'm sorry, let me read it real quick. After establishment of the board, the board shall be appointed by Board of Commissioners from nominees presented from the Human Services Board, and they want to make sure that if they're going to do interviews, that the board will also do interviews, they just want to make clear that, clear that up, and so they can tell applicants, uh, some of these positions are appointed by positions, but there are some positions that are actual citizens, just regular citizens that apply. So I just want to get clarification, I had a conversation with County Attorney, HHS Director, and some other members about this, so just want to get clarification, so they can make these applicants aware of how the board will proceed.
Okay, let me repeat back what I think I heard, I just want to make sure I got it right, maybe I'm not alone. So, so there's a, this is a state statute that says the, the Health and Human Services Board should conduct interviews and present a list of applicants to the Board of Commissioners for consideration to appointment to that board, did I hear that right?
Yes, nom-, it states nominees.
Nominees, okay. And, and then we make the final decision, but they go through that process and present nominees to us.
Correct.
Okay. I see, I see.
Oh, I see.
Amanda, what are your thoughts on this?
And, and they already have a process where they vet these individuals, where they actually do interviews, they just want to make sure that, for clarity, that they're not, they're letting the applicants know that it will be a second interview process if that's what the board chooses.
Okay.
So let me further clarify, that it would only be for certain positions, because we know that some, there have to be like a veterinarian and an eye doctor, that we're talking about those positions appointed by the state, not the community at large positions. Okay, I missed it, I think maybe I misunderstood this then.
Right, there, there are some positions that are specific, maybe
Two-state statute.
Correct. That have to be on this board, but there are positions that are not required to be special, specialized positions.
Right, the at-large positions. Could we not do the interviews jointly? Does it have to be a two-step process?
It does not.
It's something to think about.
So a question, we don't actually have to have two interviews either, right? You're wondering whether or not they do the interview, they make a recommendation, and whether we'll accept that, or whether we want to then do an interview in addition.
Correct.
Well, and I think that goes back to our whole conversation that we've been having about trying to determine these boards that make decisions on our behalf, and whether or not we do want to have those interviews, so if we do, I mean, HHS is obviously one of those that does make decisions, then we would not be following our own thought process on the interviews, so I think we would want to have a second one, if we want to stay consistent to the way we have been doing it.
Correct, the on-, the only difference is the actual statute that says that they have to make nominations, and so they actually kind of have to do the interview process in order to make nominations, whereas the other boards, they don't have to do an interview process. So if that makes a difference, so this, this actually could be, I'm sure that they may be, they, they may be open to doing, I'm sure they'll be open to doing joint interviews, but they just want to understand the process on how this board will handle this situation.
I guess just a, a legal question, since this is pretty unique, that there's a state statute kind of directing their role around these recommendations, pretty different than, I think, any of our other boards. So they're required to make nominations to the Board of Commissioners around the appointments that, as they come open, but is it correct that the county commission has complete discretion about whether to accept those nominations and go with, go, either go with the nomination or say, no, we think there's a better person for that spot, and it's this person, not who you put on your nominations list? Or are we under some obligation to accept these nominations? I mean, it's just, again, this is very different than, I think, any other process, so could we, I mean, do we have the, do we have the discretion theoretically to appoint someone who's not been nominated? Or are we obligated to choose from their list of nominees? Or is this a little vague?
I haven't had a chance to review this prior to this
Yeah.
question, but right down here, the first thing that pops out to me is, says the Consolidated Human Services Board, appointed by the Board of Commissioners, shall serve, so I think it's the determination of this board.
So they make nominations, and we need to, we're required to accept them, to listen to the nominations, but it's, at the end of the day, it's our
Yes, sir.
our call, like the other ones. Well, that's interesting.
So can I ask a question? Can they ask for more than one nomination per seat, that way they have a choice between who to add up?
I, I would certainly think that would be in order.
Right.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of detail in this, and again, I haven't been able to review it in full.
Do we have some of these positions coming up soon?
We do.
Okay.
That's why I think this is pertinent.
That's the HHS Board themselves, can you nominate members for their own board? I just wanted to say that out loud, okay.
All right, how many positions do we have coming up?
I don't exactly know, but let me check real quick.
And to reclarify my question in my head out loud, they nominate not just the professional, like, doctors, but also the at-large members? Okay. That's so strange, okay.
Well, I guess, so I guess just, here, here's what seems like it's a known thing, they have to do nominations, and so I would think that they definitely should do their due diligence, and that probably for them involves doing interviews, so that seems like that's a known piece. So I think if they're looking for feedback from us, I would say, yeah, definitely do your due diligence, do your interviews if you feel like that's part of what you need to do, but maybe, maybe we need to kind of reflect on this a little bit more because of the, the unique qualities of this, and, and maybe make a final decision about, like, do we, do we join them, and do we sit in on the interviews that they hold, or do we have a second round or something like that? I'm open to ideas, I just, this is kind of the first time I'm being reminded of this.
And I know that one of the challenges, specifically on some of those professional positions, has been bringing forward more than one person
Yeah.
at a time. So, you know, I like the idea of, you know, potentially bringing forward two nominations, we would choose from there, but I do know that it has been a challenge to fill some of those specific vacancies, and finding one person is hard enough, much less two for us.
Commissioner Edwards is correct with that, we have had positions posted for a while, and only received like one actual applicant for those specialized positions, so I do want to reiterate what she says, and it looks as though we will have five positions by the end of February that will be
And they're, and they're, they're a public board, so if they do interviews, they're open, public meetings, just like ours are, right?
Correct.
What about, what about, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, Al, but, like, what if we said, do your interviews, let us know when they are, if there are commissioners who would like to sit on them and like listen to them, then we could do that, but if the practical reality is that a lot of these positions that are pretty specialized are going to have one person, then we probably don't need to re-interview them if, you know, I don't know, do you have any other thoughts, Commissioner Edwards, is there?
I think that's a good plan, that if we can join in and view them, I think that's a great idea, that's a good compromise.
It seems like our input's best used for the at-large citizens.
Okay, I know we're kind of, you know, I mean, doing something a little different here, but it is, it is unusual that there's a state statute, so we might just need to have kind of a particular policy that's, for HHS, that's different than the other boards that we definitely want to do interviews for, so, any other thoughts on this, or are we good for now? All right, Mr. Free, before you tell us about the closed session, let me make two quick announcements, on February sixteenth at three P M., the County Commissioners will hold the briefing meeting at two hundred College Street, room three-two-six in downtown Asheville, and then later that day at five P M., on February sixteenth, the Commissioners will hold our next regular meeting at two hundred College Street, room three-two-six in downtown Asheville. We have a need for closed session.
Yes, sir, for the
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
For the interviews on February the sixteenth, is there a particular time to start these? And it looks like we may have more than ten, maybe around fifteen applicants that we will possibly have to interview, it depends on if all of them would like to be interviewed, but we have potentially about fifteen applicants
Okay.
for those three boards.
We have a briefing meeting starting at three o'clock that day, I mean, my suggestion would be to just, as you work on identifying the number of interviews, you know, we need ten minutes for each person, so just kind of work backwards from there and give us time for at least a brief break before the three o'clock.
I didn't, I didn't know if any commissioners had any other engagements, I think at one point in time, there were some other boards that were meeting, are there any?
I don't think there are any that day that I'm aware of.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I have one from eleven to twelve that day, but otherwise, I'm available.
All right.
They'll start after twelve.
Yeah, we would definitely start after twelve.
Okay, so just let us know how much time you think we need to get them all accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, a need for a closed session, I would like to have a closed session with the board, so that legal staff can update the board on a number of legal matters we have, so looking for a motion to consult with attorneys employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as follows, Heaton versus Jack Van Duncan at all, that's Buncombe County Superior Court, twenty C V S, three-two-four-seven, Knowles versus Buncombe County at all, Buncombe County Superior Court, nineteen C V S, five-oh-five-oh, Hunter versus Buncombe County and Jack Van Duncan, Buncombe County Superior Court, twenty-one C V S, one-six-eight, Lyles versus Buncombe County at all, Buncombe County Superior Court, twenty C V S, three-seven-five-seven, Torres versus Nathan Bell and others, U S District Court, Western District, North Carolina, nineteen C V fourteen, Brotese L versus Buncombe County, U S District Court, nineteen C V two-eight-five, Paul A. Valdez-Bay versus Officer Payton and others, U S District Court, nineteen C V three-three-three, Judd versus Langford at all, U S District Court, nineteen C V one-five-eight, and Shine versus Buncombe County or versus City of Asheville at all, Buncombe County Superior Court, twenty C V S, four-six-nine-six, those four-six-nine-six, and Hyatt and Barrett versus Miller at all, Western District, North Carolina, nineteen C V two-five-oh, the State of Pickering versus Buncombe County, HHS and Buncombe County, Buncombe County Superior Court, eighteen C V S, three-nine-seven-one, and Epley Rogers versus Sherman at all, Buncombe County Superior Court, twenty C V S, three-nine-one. Two of these matters, the State of Pickering and Hyatt, we're looking for direction from the board, the others would be updates.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are, are going to adjourn into closed session, when we come back, we do not anticipate any action being taken by the board tonight, we're just going to adjourn the meeting at that point.